Okay, convening our February 18th, Thursday, 2:00 PM Agenda of the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce, here in room 329 at the Capitol. Thank you, everyone, for our last and abbreviated short hearing before the first lateral filing deadline this evening. I will ask with respect to that, in respect, excuse me, out of respect for our HMSO drafter who will still have to make these reports, if we can try to expedite our testimony today, that would be great and very helpful to make sure that if you support these bills, that they end up actually getting filed. With that, just a few housekeeping notes really quickly. There will be a two-minute time limit imposed on each testifier. I will ask you to start to summarize after those two minutes have elapsed, to ask people to show aloha and preserve decorum when they are testifying. When you are testifying, if you can unmute yourself, otherwise, if you can keep yourself muted, that'll help facilitate today's proceedings. Again, my thanks to everyone for being here for this Tuesday, this Thursday, 2:00 PM Agenda of the Consumer Protection Commerce Committee. First off, we have HB 944 relating to the Regulatory Authority of Insurance Commissioner. This would adopt certain provisions of the National Association of Insurance Commissioners Producer Licensing Model Act, in addition to making some additional changes. We are our first and only testifier on this measure, Commissioner Colin Hayashida from the Insurance Division of DCCA in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity of hearing this bill. And, you know, you have our written comments in support of this administration bill. It basically modernizes the NAIC Model Act. In 2001, when we adopted this act, we did lower the penalties. This legislation would raise the penalties to where it should be currently, and also help facilitate electronic processing of more licenses for the insurance division. Thank you very much, Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you. The Insurance Commissioners are only testifier on this measure. Members, any questions on HB 944? Okay, seeing no questions on this administration measure, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB 947. This is relating to hurricane preparedness. Also an administration measure establishing the Safe Home Program to provide matching and non-matching grants for installation of wind-resistant devices for single-family owner-occupied residential property owners in certain circumstances with some commensurate infrastructure personnel. First off, we have the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, Gwen Yamamoto-Lau in support. Oh, sorry, are you? No, not present, okay. Next, we have the State Procurement Office offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Monica Akoi for the State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony addressing only the administration of the safe program. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Hello, this is Chris Junker on behalf of the Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, Luke Myers, in support.
Chair, good afternoon. My name is Luke Myers. I'm the Administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. We stand on our testimony in support of House Bill 947. We are available for discussion as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Commissioner Hayashida with the Insurance Division of DCCA in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We have our written comments in support of this administration bill. I would also like to add that, you know, we know that we are asking for an appropriation. However, given the current economic situation that the state is in, even if we are not able to get an appropriation, we still hope that the legislature will pass the framework for this legislation to allow us the time to get the program started. We do know that it will take some time to pass administrative rules and get the program ready to go. We always can come back in a future session for an appropriation. And we do know that grants are available, and in fact, HAIEMA and UH have already applied for a grant for mitigation. If they do receive that grant, they would like our help in administering that mitigation. But currently, without any statutory authority, we would not be able to do that. So we ask for your consideration. We will be available for questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's all the present testifiers we have on this measure. Members, please note, we also have additional support from governmental, private organizations and individual support. Members, any questions on HB 947? Representative Onishi.
Yeah, um, Mr. Glenn, I guess. Um, my question is, so one of the eligibility requirements is that the household income cannot exceed eighty percent of the median annual adjusted gross income for household. How many people in that category actually own their homes? Is he no longer there?
Chair, I think I would be better suited to answer that question.
Mr. Hayashida.
Thank you, Representative. In terms of owning your home, that is with or without a mortgage, correct?
Um, I don't know, I guess.
Yeah, so. I beg your pardon?
It doesn't say in the bill.
Yeah, so we don't know the exact amount of people that would or would not qualify. However, this program is modeled after South Carolina. And we do acknowledge the fact that, at some point, even if we were appropriated funds or had grant money, that that money would eventually run out. And what would happen then would be that the program would be temporarily suspended until the fund received another source of funding, either through an appropriation or another grant.
Okay, I mean, well, my concern was, how was this eighty percent established? And if you're using South Carolina, there, I mean, is it? Is the ratio of the the average income or the median annual income in South Carolina?
We adjusted it for Hawaii. The figures that are in the bill, we adjusted, when we drafted it, we adjusted it for Hawaii.
So eighty percent?
Yeah.
So again, if you adjusted it for Hawaii, then you should have also tried to get figures on how many people would qualify at these two different, you got under eighty and over eighty, right?
Well, we didn't, we didn't figure the amount how much would or wouldn't qualify. We weren't sure how much we're going to get funded for. And we knew that if the program ran out of money, you know, whether it be twenty grants or a hundred grants, we would suspend the program once that money was expended.
I fully understand that, but in terms of it being an effective program, wouldn't you want to address support and help for, first of all, the lower-income homeowners so that they could take advantage and protect their homes?
Yes, that's why we split it up into two different groups.
Yeah, and so you would think that you would have an idea on how many people would qualify. You know, I mean, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions on HB 947? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB 424. This is relating to procurement of contracts for vehicle rental. It would require all state agencies, when renting a vehicle on behalf of a state employee conducting official government business, to adopt a preference for renting electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles, provided that such a vehicle is suitable for the specific travel requirements and available when needed. We have our first testifier indicating that he'll be present, the Hawaii State Procurement Office. Are you still on? Bonnie?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The State Procurement Office stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Hello, this is Chris Junker on behalf of Scott Glenn for the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony in support. We would just note that for rental car companies, this bill is a carrot, not a stick, and that employees only need to rent vehicles if they are available. I stand ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Our Revolution Hawaii, Dave Mullnitz in support. All right, David's not here. We also have.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Jun Chi, on behalf of Hawaiian Electric, standing on the written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Forsite Polis, or, excuse me, Enterprise Holdings, Mihoko Ito.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members. Mihoko Ito, on behalf of Enterprise, will stand on our testimony in support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, of those testimonies provided by testifiers indicating they would be present, we have Robin Knox, an individual in support.
Aloha, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, members. I wanted to testify today to make sure that you knew that reducing emissions from fossil fuel burning by automobiles is not just a big-picture climate change, clean energy issue. It very directly impacts people like myself who have asthma. I noticed during the shutdown, when there were less cars, that I could breathe easier and had less symptoms. And there are thirty-six thousand keiki and seventy-six thousand adults like me who have asthma in Hawaii, and a significant percent of them are native Hawaiian. These fossil fuel burning not only releases the nitrogen and sulfur oxides that cause asthma or can trigger respiratory problems, but they also put out mercury. And I feel very directly impacted by this every week when I plan my menu, because I love to eat fish. And it's certainly traditional in Hawaii to have a lot of fish in your diet, but because of mercury from fossil fuel emissions, it's advisable not to eat fish more than two or three times a week. So, anyway, thank you. I am in support of this bill, and I think the state should take leadership and should make choices that reduce harm to citizens and that set an example, like the previous testifier said, a carrot to, for all of us to look forward to less emissions in the future. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Ms. Knox. Members, that's all the, that's the extent of the testimony we have of those indicating that they would be in this virtual hearing to testify. Please note that there are numerous individuals and organizations also offering supportive testimony of HB 424. With that, members, any questions on HB 424? Representative Onishi.
Yes, thank you, Chair. For Enterprise, Rosito?
Yes. Hi, hi, Rep.
Hi. Basic question. Are electric and hybrid vehicles rented at the same rate as combustible engine rentals?
They're definitely not rented at the same rate right now. And I can tell you that also in just sheer numbers, there obviously, Enterprise's fleet has far more combustible engine vehicles than electric or hybrids. I think we have about seventy-seven in our fleet right now. But they're not rented as often. And, you know, when, although they have been somewhat gaining in popularity, they often sit and don't get rented, which is why we support this bill, because we think it is, you know, does offer a way to increase demand for the vehicles by having state employees rent them, and is a carrot rather than a stick, as mentioned by previous testifiers.
Do you have any idea on the difference, the percentage difference in cost?
That I don't know. I can ask, though. I mean, they, I can tell you that they are, electric vehicles are still significantly more expensive, and not just the expense, but the availability for rental car companies to obtain electric vehicles, because it's just not there in the numbers that I think even the rental car companies would hope to have them. So combined with that, plus the lack of demand for them, it kind of, it makes the the companies, you know, make business decisions based on demand ultimately. So because the demand isn't there, you know, we just don't see the vehicles in the same numbers. But I can ask for you and get back to you about the price.
So I have a question. Okay, so in terms of the process of renting a vehicle, so if I need a vehicle next week, and I work for a department or agency, and I go to one of your car rental companies, and I have to, the priority is I have to rent an electric vehicle, right? When I make my reservation, I make the reservation for a particular type of vehicle, don't I?
Right, yes.
So unless that there are no electric vehicles available, I would end up renting an electric vehicle.
According to the way this bill reads right now, yes, I think that's correct. So a state employee would come in, reserve the car ahead of time, and try to rent an electric or hybrid vehicle before renting, before making other choices. And if it's not available, then they would rent something else.
And they could rent a combustion engine. Okay, and you said that because you guys have a lot of electric vehicles that sit on your lots, unrented.
Yes, I think right now, it's just, you know, there's a lot of reasons why the cars aren't as popular. I think, you know, for the small amount of tourists that are coming, you know, the cars are smaller, the trunk space is smaller, and, you know, many people who come on vacation need the additional space. And also, you know, there, I think another reason why they're not as popular is because the infrastructure is not there, and people may have hesitations about renting an electric vehicle when they don't know where they will charge the vehicle.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Chair. Another question.
Please proceed.
Procurement Office, real quick. For Procurement Office?
Yes, Representative.
Is it good state policy for us to procure any service or product, no matter what the cost is?
I think that really would depend on what the cost is. Currently, we do have a contract that is not, does not include EV vehicles. We rent approximately close to twenty-four thousand rental days. And so, and I believe it's probably around nine-hundred thousand dollars or so. And if it's going to cost fifty percent more, then agencies are going to have to, you know, eat those chart, eat those additional costs. So it's a, it's a balance between, currently would be a balance between what is affordable and what the agencies can afford to rent, or cut down on their travel days.
So your contract, does it call for a specific car rental company or multiple car rental companies?
Currently, our contract is with Enterprise National Malamal, but it does not include electric vehicles. And it's a flat rate per day inclusive of taxes, fees, and gas.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB 424? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to our last agenda item, HB 472, relating to telehealth. This would exempt telehealth-related gifts from procurement requirements. It also codifies the authorization of APRNs to use telehealth to assist patients, including those APRNs who are not licensed in the state under certain conditions. It makes permanent certain telehealth-related exemptions for licensed health professions issued by recent gubernatorial proclamations. On this measure, we have State Procurement Office, Bonnie, offering.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The State Procurement Office stands on its written testimony with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Department of Public Safety offering comments. Jared Ridula.
Good afternoon, Chair members. Jared Ridula, the state narcotics administrator. With submitted written comments, I just want to briefly focus on an area of very strong concern that the department has, and that is Section 5 of the bill, which proposes to remove the in-person face-to-face physical examination requirement and the in-the-state physical presence of a practitioner if a physician or APRN under this measure uses telehealth. Under our current laws, those are very, very strong community safeguards that are in place to protect the community from illegal pill mills, dial-a-dog operations, and practitioners who are unscrupulous in the way that they issue prescriptions. We have significant concern that if out-of-state prescribing is allowed under this measure, we will have a proliferation of these types of illegal activity, as well as we also have significant concern over jurisdiction and procedures in a criminal investigation, which, for example, if an out-of-state prescriber is involved in criminal activity by prescribing into our state, we feel that our ability to obtain evidence, to review records, and to otherwise investigate the case fully involving an out-of-state prescriber would be extremely limited. And in fact, this may put criminal actors out of reach of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have DCCA Board of Nursing, Leanne Toshima, offering comments.
Thank you, Chair. Leanne Toshima, Executive Officer for the Board of Nursing. We'll stand on our written comments. You have our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have also Ms. Toshima with the Board of Pharmacy offering comments.
Thank you. We'll stand on our written comments as well.
Thank you. I'm not sure. Do we have Department of Human Services, MedQuest Division, offering comments?
Hello, how you do? Hi, I'm Judy Moore Peterson, MedQuest Division Administrator. Thank you. The Department of Human Services submitted written comments, and we stand on those written comments. I think we were testifying on, I think it's Section, I apologize, right here, Section 7, just that particular section, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the, let's see, Board of Veterinary Medicine, Chelsea Fukunaga, offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chelsea Fukunaga, Executive Officer for the Board of Veterinary Medicine. We will stand on our written testimony, offering comments. I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii Medical Board, Alani Kiyoki, DCCA, offering comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The board will stand on its written comments, providing concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Kaiser Permanente, Jonathan Ching, offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. We will stand on our written testimony, offering comments. We also are asking for an amendment, which we believe would further clarify Sections 8, 9, and 10, which were amendments that were made by the previous committee. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Queens Health System, J.C. McElhenney, offering comment.
Hello, Chair, members of the committee. We'll stand on our written comments. We appreciate the intent of the bill, but we do have concerns as they relate to patient safety, and we outlined those in our testimony, specifically Section 14 requiring the in-person consultation for prescribing opiates, and also maintaining licensing requirements for medical professionals practicing in the state of Hawaii. We appreciate the committees looking at telehealth, and we certainly would prefer and support the bill you passed out previously, HB 473, which also relates to telehealth. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We also have the Healthcare Association of Hawaii, Paige Hakarun Choi, offering comments.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for allowing us to express some of our concerns with this measure. You know, we agree with a lot of what the previous testifiers have noted regarding having folks from out-of-state license, especially about the in-person consultation for controlled substances. I did just want to note that, you know, I I did just want to note that, you know, I think we're, we're talking a lot about telehealth and how it's been used in the pandemic, and how we're going to pivot, uh, potentially past the emergency, uh, period. Um, and, and there was an exemption provided for telehealth for some folks from out-of-state, um, but there were some exemptions. Uh, in there are some caveats included, um, just to make sure that we still did have some, um, patient protections, um, and making sure that people can see providers appropriately. So we would also echo, um, what, what Queens, um, previously testified on, that HB 473, um, which does have community consensus on expanding access to, uh, telehealth by, uh, clarifying just certain pieces of the Physician Practice of Medicine, uh, chapter, which we do have white consensus on among, um, our members that we would, we would prefer that, um, going forward. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. We also have, uh, the Hawaii Psychological Association, Dr. Alex Lipton, in support.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Yes, HPA does strongly support this measure. And we'd like to take this opportunity to recommend that the committee also add language from HB 384, which was recently deferred by another, uh, committee, which would establish, uh, parity for insurance reimbursement uh, between telehealth and traditional face-to-face services. This language, uh, addresses various aspects of insurance, uh, reimbursement. I'd just like to emphasize a few things. Recently, we surveyed our members, and parity for telehealth, uh, was the, uh, largest concern, uh, that our members had for this legislative, uh, session. Research has shown that, uh, tell, the, for mental health, telehealth, uh, services are just as effective as face-to-face services. And, um, right now psychologists are being overwhelmed because of the pandemic. You may have read recently that 82% of people surveyed in Hawaii reported, um, mental health problems over the last year related to the pandemic. It hasn't made the news much, but psychologists right now are working overtime. Uh, demand is at an all-time high. They're working very long hours. And our members are worried, you know, we're relying on the insurance companies to extend telehealth, uh, coverage during the pandemic. Uh, and you can take away the anxiety by adding this language. It doesn't seem fair to me that, uh, you know, insurance companies might make more money, but the psychologist would make less money for a phone session or a telephone session, for a video session, when it takes just as much time to do a 50-minute psychotherapy session regardless of how it's delivered. Sometimes our clients, uh, they have car trouble, they're taking care of a sick child or grandparents. Um, and telephone, the last point I want to emphasize is, um, you know, sometimes people don't have access to video, so I think telephone, uh, sessions should be treated the same. Some people don't have the bandwidth, particularly on the outer islands or the elderly who are not familiar with using, uh, video equipment. We stand on our testimony, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lipton. Members, that's the extent of our present testifiers. Please note on this measure, there are also additional, uh, comments and supportive testimony proffered by organizations. Members, any questions on HB 472? Representative Onishi.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Chair, but I have concerns with this bill, uh, for, uh, procurement office.
Yes, Representative Senator.
Yeah, um, so as you heard, there's a lot of departments and agencies testified with comments. And, um, in their, in their testimony, there's a lot of recommendations being made. And most of them are significant, uh, requests. So in your case, if your recommendation is not amended to the bill, are you in support or against this bill?
We're just, um, commenting on the exception to gifts. Gifts is already, uh, it's, it's already covered by 103D, which allows for gifts, and the AG has a point on that. And then our second comment is about gifts, telehealth gifts, uh, subject to 103F. And there's some language in there that we believe is ambiguous, and that may not fit exactly under the 103F series if we're talking about gifts of bandwidth and Wi-Fi. That is our major concern.
Okay, so even if we don't remove it, you're okay?
I don't think I'm in a position to talk about the actual telehealth program itself and its benefits.
Okay.
Just as I say, our concern is just about the gifts, the language is not necessary to include gifts, which is already included in 103D.
Um, question for Department of Public Safety.
Good afternoon, Representative.
So you just heard what I had mentioned to the procurement office, so I have the same question for you. If your recommendations are not included in the bill, amended into the bill, are you in favor or against this bill?
So if, if the controlled substance is nexus in the bill, um, and some of the other licensing issues were removed, I, I think that the, the telehealth side of it is indeed an advantageous and beneficial, um, part of the measure. It's the other part that is contentious.
Yeah, so my question, if it's not, if your recommendations are not included, would you be in support or against this bill?
I think the department, sir, would support the, the, the telehealth gifting, um, part of the bill, which is beneficial, and be okay if the other side of it was removed.
Okay, that's okay.
I'm sorry, sir.
Uh, I have the same question for, uh, the Leanne Tashima, for both the Board of Pharmacy and the Board of Nursing.
In regards to the, the issues we're having with the bill, um, is to allow out-of-state APRNs to basically write a, um, perform telehealth, which is fine. But they would also be able to write a prescription for a controlled substance. Um, will, which will carry over to the pharmacy side. The pharmacists have um, a corresponding responsibility in filling a prescription for a controlled substance. Um, this is all outlined under the, um, under the United States Code of Federal Regulations.
I understand their concern, but my question is, if your recommendations are not amended into the bill, are you in support or against this bill?
As it pertains to just the APRNs, we're, we're, we're good.
For both boards?
Uh, I can't speak for the pharmacy side because it will still impact the other, um, healthcare professionals. So they could fill prescriptions or not fill prescriptions written by another healthcare provider mentioned in the bill.
Okay. Um, and finally, for Department of Human Services?
Hello, Representative.
Aloha. I, I have the same question for you. If your recommendations are not amended to the bill, are you in support or against this bill?
I think, um, that, as you've heard from the other, from the other departments, we're responding to particular pieces of the, of the bill. Um, we actually didn't make any, um, recommendations one way or the other. We were making more comments around, um, the, uh, using a, a phone call to be the exact equivalent of a face-to-face visit. Uh, and so we.
Well, I mean, isn't that a concern in the bill?
Um, there, there was an amendment that, uh, that, 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 um, that made the, the, um, so that it's not the exact financial, um, equivalent. And then we would look for other ways in which to help put clinical safeguards around, um, an audio-only visit or a, a patient encounter to make sure that, that it was being used appropriately. But the, uh, telephone calls have been, um, really a very valuable part of, um, helping our Medicaid population be able to access care during the pandemic. We would like to look for ways in which to continue that. The bill, I think, um, it, it doesn't help or prevent us from moving forward with the, with the audio-only, uh, visits. And so we would be able to live with the, 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 that particular change. But I would note that we would also have the same kinds of concerns that were, uh, brought up by, um, some of the other departments regarding, uh, uh, safety, clinical safety, et cetera, from out-of-state prescribers, et cetera. Because we would, we would be very concerned about, um, there are unscrupulous clinicians out there, and we, we would like to keep those safeguards in place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions on HB 472? Okay, seeing none, we'll recess for decision-making. Recession. Our 2pm agenda, the Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee, uh, for decision-making purposes. First off, members, thanks for your patience, and thanks to the public as well for being here today on HB 944 relating to the Regulatory Authority of the Insurance Commissioner. The recommendation is to move this measure out with a simple amendment of defecting the date to January 1, 2050, to keep the discussion going. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 944 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, Representative Aquino. Representative Har?
Aye.
Representative Hashem? Representative Kong? Representative Mizuno? Representative Morikawa? Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Tarnas?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto? Chair, uh, measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members on HB 947, another administration, uh, request relating to hurricane preparedness. Uh, the recommendation here is to also move this measure with a simple amendment of defecting the date to January 1, 2050, um, to encourage further discussion. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 947 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members on HB 424 relating to procurement of contracts for vehicle rental. Recommendation, uh, is to move this measure as is, unamended. Members, any comments or question, uh, comments or questions? Representative Onishi.
Yes, um, Chair, I think it's bad policy for us to start, um, procuring services no matter what the cost would be. Um, you know, we've been asking departments, agencies, and our government workers to try to cut back, and yet this bill, you know, it specifically states that cost is not a consideration. So because of that, I have to vote no on this.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I echo the same concerns and sentiments of, uh, the Chair of Labor. Um, accordingly, I'll be voting with reservations respectfully. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 424 HD1, as is noting the presence of all members and noting the reservation vote by Representative Har. Are there any other reservations? Reservations by Representative Morikawa, Representative Kong, any other reservations? Noting the no vote of Representative Onishi, are there any no, additional no votes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members on HB 472 relating to telehealth. Um, I think this measure needs quite a bit of work. Um, I do share some of the concerns that have been brought up, uh, unfortunately, because we are at the deadline tonight. Uh, and we've been asked to keep this measure moving. I will recommend at this point just to move this measure as is. Um, but note that I share many of the concerns, and if this bill is to cross the finish line, I think many of these concerns need to actually be worked out. Member, so recommendation is to move this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions? Representative Onishi.
Oh, Chair, I share your concerns, and I understand the deadlines we face. Chair, I share your concerns, and I understand the deadlines we face, so I'm going to be voting with reservations.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kitagawa.
Just thank you for, you know, this, hearing this bill. I think telehealth is an important part of our health, just the role it plays in healthcare. But I do have some of the same concerns that have been shared in testimony regarding out-of-state APRNs, and also similar to concerns I shared yesterday, concerns about piecemealing legislation regarding APRNs. So I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you. Members, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Representative Haar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the recommendation, and again, respecting all the deadlines. I think I echo many of the same concerns that the Vice Chair and the Chair of Labor have, so respectfully, I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 472 HD1 as is, noting the presence of all members and noting the reservation votes by myself, Representative Haar, and Representative Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Matsumoto? Are there any no votes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much, members. This concludes our last hearing before the first lateral deadline. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to our testifiers today. This meeting is adjourned.